I want to welcome everyone. It's June 23rd, 2020, and I want to welcome you to the third reading, which is also the final public hearing for the 2020-2020-2021 General Fund Operating Budget. We're going to do it live and virtually, so bear with us. We've got a lot of technology going on, so we hope it's all going to work. At this time, do I hear a motion to conclude executive session and begin the 2020-2021 General Fund Budget Hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All in favor of beginning the, uh, the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. Um, we are officially calling this hearing to order, and I would like to remind you that we are in compliance with the Governor's orders and CDC recommendations. The auditorium has been thoroughly cleaned and sanitized before the meeting, and will be after the meeting also. District staff will also sanitize the microphone before and after staff presentations or individuals speaking during citizens' participation. All board members, employees, and other individuals in attendance are encouraged to social distance and to wear a mask at all times. There is limited seating tonight. Once all the seats in here are full, and I think we still have three if anyone else wants to join us, attendees are asked to go to the staff development room, which is also called the overflow room, where we will have a live feed where they can watch the meeting while observing social distancing guidelines. The public is encouraged to watch the meeting on our YouTube channel. After the meeting, the district will follow its previously established process by posting a video of the meeting to the district's YouTube channel, Lexington One video site, and our own website. I would like to remind you that the district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this hearing. The district tapes this hearing for accuracy in preparing the minutes. At this time, I would like to call on Dr. Powers to lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Dr. Powers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty these days, which leads to a lot of unrest, uh, and so I searched for a prayer of peace. So I found this, uh, a lot of you have heard it's the St. Francis of, uh, UCC. I always say that wrong, um, prayer, and I've modified it a little bit for Lexington Ones. Let's bow our heads. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow charity. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's error, truth. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O Lord, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is dying to our self-interest that we can serve this community of learners. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Powers.
Stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Um, at this time, we're going to go to Agenda Item 5.0, which is the third and final reading for our 2020-2021 Proposed General Fund Budget. And, Mr. Salters, who's our Chief Financial Officer, will present that budget reading. He's going to do it virtually. Um, he's in on a conference call. So, Mr. Salters, I'm going to turn it over to you, but I would like to remind everyone that we do have members from finance with us tonight. And so we, would y'all raise your hands if you, and all the finance people are here, so, uh, we've got backup in the room. So, okay, Mr. Salters, you ready?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, I am. Um, can you hear me okay?
Uh, let me just try it again, let's see. Say something.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Is that, okay, it's not. If it echoes, let us know. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Salters.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, uh, thank you for, uh, indulging me, um, this evening in, um, truly social distance, uh, presentation of the third reading. I do apologize for not being able to be there in person. Um, however, I am, um, actually under, under quarantine, uh, with my family right now. Um, and so we'll just leave it at that. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and, um, get started with the presentation. Um, as, as mentioned, this is the third, uh, reading of the budget, and we would be seeking, um, action this evening, uh, later on in the, in the meeting, um, on this budget. Um, just start with a, a quick reminder. The general fund, um, budget is used for operating expenditures. Um, it's, it's basically the roadmap for the district's revenues, um, and how those revenues are going to be expended to, uh, conduct the day-to-day operations of the school district. Uh, conversely, we have, uh, capital funds, um, that, um, you may hear about from time to time, and those funds, um, are funds that are restricted by law and bond covenants, and, um, are designated really for major building programs, uh, technology, renovations, um, other items such as, uh, buses, library books, band instruments, and things like that, um, are also used for capital funding. Um, but they are not typically used for the day-to-day, um, operations, uh, of the school district. Um, and I wanted to take just a, a minute to, um, talk to you about our capital funding. Um, we, just this past week, um, were able to, to, uh, conduct the refunding that you voted on a few months ago. The bond market came back, um, to, to say a little bit, and it became favorable again for us to, uh, move forward with that refunding. And we, uh, were able to, um, go through our ratings with Moody's and Standard and Coors, um, the two rating agencies, and you see on the screen there, um, our ratings were affirmed, um, again, um, by both rating agencies. Um, and I just highlighted a couple of quotes, uh, from Moody's, uh, exactly the mitigation strategies they're looking for, uh, during this time to maintain a strong financial performance. Um, and then S&amp;P, uh, demonstrated strong financial performance resulting in a long track record of strength and stability. Uh, couldn't ask for anything more, um, out of a, out of a government entity. So, those are, uh, obviously the two most popular, um, rating agencies in, in the United States. And for those to, to recognize the, the performance that the district has maintained over many years, um, is a, is a testament to the Board and the, and the stability, um, of our finances. So I just wanted to highlight that as part of, uh, what we're doing. And I would add, as part of the refunding, um, that we were able to, uh, going, going through that, we're actually originally estimated to save, um, roughly seven to eight million dollars. Um, and actually, uh, we actually ended up saving 12.6 million dollars, and that present value of the savings is 12.6 million. So, um, that's a significant, uh, amount of funding, uh, or savings, I should say, to our taxpayers over the course of those bonds that were, that were refunded. So, um, you know, you couple that with, uh, the recent bond sale that we did where we, we got a, um, roughly 15 million dollar premium, um, payment to us. You know, that's, uh, 27, um, million and some change just in this year, um, that, that the district has seen in, in savings and also premium, um, as a result of stable, um, budget and stable, uh, financial position. So, um, that's just kind of a good shout out for, for you, you, the Board, for, um, overseeing that. So, moving on to our, our budget, um, some considerations that we, um, we're looking at in this budget process. Obviously, this is a very, uh, different timeframe than we, we've dealt with in years past. Um, we do anticipate some, some funding shortfalls, um, in this fiscal year. Uh, the General Assembly, uh, passed a continuing resolution, um, to fund us at the same level, uh, next year as we are this year, at least, you know, to, to start the year. Um, but we don't know what other shortfalls may, may come about. Um, they're scheduled to get back together on the 15th of September to look at the general appropriations bill, uh, going forward. So, uh, we're obviously continuing to monitor the economy, um, and any other further actions that the General Assembly is, um, looking at. Um, along with that, uh, the Board of Economic Advisers, we're following their work and predictions. Um, and we will likely, um, have to do a budget amendment at some point, um, after, uh, a general appropriations bill is passed this fall, uh, with the General Assembly. Um, and some additional considerations, you know, our proposed budget, uh, really focuses on quality education and support, uh, for our students and staff. That's, uh, what the district has, uh, come to be known for. Uh, currently, there is no, uh, salary step increase included, um, at this time. Um, that's related to a couple factors. One is the uncertainty of state funding, but the other is, um, uh, the, the continuing resolution. I'll speak more on that in a minute. Uh, the proposed budget is designed to provide for student growth, um, and, and meet state and federal requirements. And then we do have some inflationary costs that we have to meet, uh, within this budget. Obviously, some priorities for us this, this year, um, are to open Centerville Elementary School, uh, and part of that opening is to restructure Gilbert Elementary and Gilbert Primary Schools. We'll also be relocating Pelean Middle School, um, and excited about opening the College Center, um, at Gilbert High School. And then, um, you know, we're preparing for the impact of, of COVID-19 and the many unknowns, uh, associated, uh, with that. Um, just taking a look at our average daily membership, uh, and, and our growth, historical growth, um, you can see right now, we're projecting, um, some 527 students in growth. Um, this will be an interesting number to watch this year. Um, and I know that later this evening, we're going to be talking about some different options for what start of school may look like. Uh, but we, right now, are looking at, at some additional growth, uh, coming into our community. Um, so we, we will be watching that very closely. Um, the, you know, the 27 oh 34 number there, um, i- is a, a projection, and it, it does not include, um, our, our three and four-year-olds. And, uh, last year, we had 847 of those students. So, uh, we're, we're approaching 28,000, um, should the growth, um, occur as we, we would expect. Um, speaking back to salaries, uh, briefly, um, as I mentioned, currently there's no step or, or, uh, salary increase for any employees in the, uh, proposed budget. Um, obviously, the, the district feels, uh, employees deserve a raise, um, and, and so, um, or a step increase, uh, you know, your experience step increase. Um, at this time, the district is legally restricted from providing that step increase for teachers. Um, and that's in, uh, Part Two, Section Four D of the, um, Act One and Thirty-Five, which is, uh, that continuing resolution. Um, and so, we don't feel it's prudent to move forward with other raises for other employees until we see what the General Assembly, uh, is going to do for teachers, uh, in the fall. Um, you know, couple that with the, the uncertainty of, of the economic impact of COVID-19, um, you know, we, we feel like we, you know, we need to kind of see where things are going, and then what the General Assembly does. Um, when the state, uh, passes, you know, uh, General Appropriations Act, um, in the fall, we certainly will move quickly to amend the district's budget, uh, to incorporate, uh, any raises that, um, might be associated with that act. And, you know, we do anticipate that, um, those raises would be, you know, for the contract year for, for employees. So it would, um, be retroactive should it occur later in the fall, um, then when teachers come back and start. Um, taking a look at our, our general fund staffing, and, um, you know, this is kind of an overall net, um, out of our staffing changes. Um, you know, I mentioned we're looking at 527, um, new students potentially, but we, um, are only looking at a overall net change of, uh, 15 and a half staff members. This, this has not changed, um, since, uh, first reading. Um, and you, you'll notice that at the elementary level, we have, um, actually reduced, uh, six FTE. That's being accomplished by, uh, increasing ratios by one, um, at, at kindergarten, first, and second grade, um, to 23 to one. Um, and so, you know, of course, those, those staffing ratios and numbers will have different meanings, um, as we go to open school and, and talk further about that later this evening. But, um, you know, that's how we're budgeting at this point. Um, and if you come on down, you'll see, um, you know, s- positions for our special needs, um, uh, students, and, um, the, the nine, um, staff members there for, um, support staff for special needs, or instructional assistants, and those are transfers. Actually, they're not new positions. They're in the general, excuse me, they're in the district now, but they're, they were funded by IDEA, and that funding, uh, is continuing to, uh, decrease. And so those nine positions are having to be transferred to the general fund. Um, and so we're picking those up. That, uh, IDEA, uh, one of the questions came back, um, recently from one of the board members regarding that funding. We're supposed to be funded at 40% uh, by the federal government, and we're actually funded only at about 14%, uh, percent for IDEA. Um, and so, again, 15 and a half FTE there. Um, Ms. Garris asked for, uh, at, at our second reading, a breakdown of our Gilbert, um, and Centerville, um, FTE. And so this is a, a, a display of that. It shows, um, you know, the, the current fiscal year at the top, and how those FTE are, are broken out, and then, um, the upcoming fiscal year, where, um, we'll have Gilbert Elementary School and then Centerville Elementary School, um, and, uh, the breakdown of, of the, the FTE to open, um, uh, or reconfigure those two facilities. And, uh, looking at our increases in programs and services, um, you know, I mentioned some, um, impacts of COVID-19. Um, the unemployment compensation i- is one of those impacts. Uh, we, um, anticipate our unim- we are a, um, a reimbursable employer to the South Carolina, um, unemployment system, and so we will be invoiced, uh, for, uh, basically un- um, unemployment claims. And we have seen a, uh, increase in those, uh, during this time, and we, we've projected that out, uh, through the end of the year and anticipate, um, this liability, um, growing to this point. Uh, we do, um, I will, I will tell you, this amount of money is being included in our CARES Act funding request, and so it's very possible that, um, that will be, uh, reimbursed through CARES Act funding, um, um, if that plan is approved. Um, we've got some, uh, increases for safety and, and security. We were funded, um, for, uh, some additional SROs, uh, through the State Department of Education, uh, this, this year, and we have to provide, um, equipment, uh, the, the fringe cost of their, of their benefits, um, uh, not the salary. They only cover salary. Um, and then we also have factored in a, a 3% salary increase, um, for the county, which, um, they are in, in their budget conversations as well. In fact, they may, I believe they may have their last reading this evening on their budget, but we have to plan for increased costs associated with those SROs. Um, Employee Assistance Program is a very important, uh, program that our, uh, Human Resource, uh, Division, um, has sought bids for and, uh, identified a, a vendor to move forward with. This will really help, um, on that social, emotional, um, and cultural well-being of our staff. And, um, um, you'll find that large districts like ours, um, all offer this. It's a very, uh, good benefit for our, our employees and, and really reduces, um, you know, turnover, workplace, uh, incidents of absenteeism, things like that, because it, it, um, really gives them, you know, an out and someone to, to talk to. So we're really interested in, in moving forward with that. That additionally qualifies for CARES Act funding, and so we, um, have incorporated that into our CARES Act, uh, plan, uh, for potential reimbursement as well. Workers' Compensation premiums, um, this is one of those inflationary costs. It's based on your, your risk, and so that, that number, um, is given directly as a premium increase. Um, some decreases in programs and services. I'll tell you that, um, we've worked really hard. I, I really appreciate our senior leadership team, our principals, um, and departments, uh, directors in our departments, really working hard to, to identify, uh, some cuts this year. Um, I mentioned in second, in first and second reading, we've taken a really hard look, account by account, using budget actual numbers, um, and going through and identifying areas where we may have had some, some funding, um, that was unspent last year. We, we've, uh, recouped that and reduced that. Um, we've reduced, um, our supplies and, and, um, maintenance and, and repairs, um, line items. Of course, we have a, a referendum out right now, um, that provides for some additions, renovations, and so forth at our school facilities. So we're, uh, working, uh, with that funding to offset some of this. Um, cutting travel, um, we don't anticipate folks traveling a whole lot this fall, um, and on into the, into the year. Uh, the Staff Services International Exchange Digital Program, this is our program that our Human Resource Division uses to onboard our, um, international teachers. Um, and we're not cutting the program. Um, there was just, uh, an amount of money budgeted there that was not, um, it, we weren't using that much money, and so, um, we, we've cut that back to align it with the expenditures. Um, and, and so that brings your, your total decreases, uh, to that 1.609 million. Now, this, in this, um, slide is, is where you'll recognize your, you're really, your only change from third reading, um, and it is an increase to a decrease, um, which I know sounds a little confusing, but that's a good thing. Uh, we, we were able to renegotiate a contract in our IT, um, division, and so the technology supplies and services line item actually increased by $90,000, um, which is an overall decrease to the budget. So, um, we're, we're pleased about that. Um, moving on to our, uh, school fees, we've had some conversations about this in our, um, previous two readings, and we, we have, uh, continued to recommend, uh, these fee reductions. Um, and so we, uh, um, again, looking at our $6 kindergarten consumable fee being eliminated, uh, the $28 grade, one through, uh, five fee reduced to, um, $20. And then at the high school level, uh, the $5 consumable fee being eliminated, um, the $5 language arts parallel reading fee eliminated, um, and then the $25 parking fee being reduced to, um, $5. Um, and as you recall, in, um, this is, uh, as I mentioned in previous readings, this is a, kind of a systematic approach that we've taken over the, uh, past, uh, few years under Dr. Little's leadership. Uh, we started with the elementary supply list, um, trying to reduce, uh, the overall impact, um, of, of our, attending our schools, uh, to our families. And, and then we moved to the middle school, um, some middle school re- fee reductions of this past year, and, um, now we've targeted some elementary and high school fees, um, this year. We, we continue to look at those, um, and will continue to look at those. Um, it's, it's our goal to make sure that, you know, fees collected are used, um, you know, for the stated purpose and for the amount that, that's needed, um, in our schools, or maintaining a, a, you know, good, um, control over that, um, aspect of, um, of their budgets. The, uh, school paid meal prices, I mentioned this in second reading, we, we, um, were handed this information from, uh, the USDA, um, and so, um, that's representing a, a 10-cent increase, um, on each of those meals. Um, the, uh, reduced meal, uh, price still stays the same. It does, it is not impacted by the 10 cents. So that reduced meal price is, uh, 30 cent for breakfast and 40 cent for lunch. Um, but that, that information is given to us by the, by the USDA. Um, so just moving on to our projected revenue, um, the only change that you see here from second to third reading, uh, we have u- uh, reduced, um, the operational balance by $90,000. Um, we, um, by renegotiating that contract, we will not, um, need that $90,000 in revenue, obviously, now. And so we've reduced the useful operational balance by that $90,000. But overall, I would, I would, you know, just call your attention to, um, you know, the, the projected decrease in the budget, um, and by $8 million. Um, you know, we talked in the previous readings about, uh, some different strategies we're using, uh, for budgeting. Uh, one of those strategies being, um, our salary, um, uh, and our, our fill rate on our salaries. Um, we had in the past been budgeting at 100% uh, fill rate, and reality is we, the highest fill rate we've seen in the last, um, really five to seven years is about a 98% fill rate. Um, and so, um, we are looking at, uh, bu- this year's budget, including a 98% fill rate as our, as our base. And so, um, that generates some, some savings on, on salary. Um, and that, and that's a, a big chunk of that, um, uh, on the expenditure side. So, just want to point some of that out. We have talked with the county. Um, in fact, I heard a statement, uh, this evening, uh, regarding the county's budget, that they do not anticipate any major, um, revenue shortfalls, um, in, in their local, um, tax revenues. So that's good news for us. Um, and, and we'll, but we'll continue to monitor that. Um, our, our revenues are aligned with the actual, um, uh, received revenues this year that we, that we have. Um, and so, again, you see the $8 million uh, reduction there. And the expenditure side, uh, as I mentioned, we've gone through and really targeted, um, all the accounts, uh, gone through and, and looked at each, each department, and, um, our, our, our schools have done really good work looking at their budgets. Um, and, and so we are, right now, proposing a, a possibly $8 million decrease in the budget. Uh, certainly, General Appropriations Act comes out and, and gives teachers a step. Um, you know, that, that, that money would, would change that, um, overall expenditure column, um, a good bit, but, um, we would hope that some of the associated revenue would come in to, to help support that. Um, so looking again at, um, this is kind of a, a graphic that just shows, um, you know, that we are, um, a people business, a service business. Our, our best resource, um, and, and most, uh, our greatest asset is our teaching staff, and that's where the bulk of our, our funding goes, our salaries and related costs. And then you see the, um, smaller percentages there for programs and services, and then our utilities and, and maintenance, uh, cost. Speak briefly about Act 388, um, the allowable millage increase. We talked about this already, uh, in our previous readings. Um, we could generate, um, potentially $3.6 million, roughly, in, um, uh, mil- in additional revenue by levying, um, our allowable millage. Um, and so, but you notice that, um, we are recommending in this budget, uh, we continue to recommend zero mills on the operational side for an increase. Um, and that's primarily because we feel strongly that our, um, you know, our families and our communities and our businesses have all been impacted, um, by the, uh, COVID-19 virus. And so, it's not, it's not only important to focus on mental, um, health and wealth, but it's important to focus on economic health and wealth. And so we feel like preserving that zero millage increase will help our local businesses, um, in the best way we can, we can reach out to them. So, just in summary, um, you know, the revenue projections, as I said earlier, will remain at the same level. will remain at the same level right now um as they are this year. Um, our local revenue projections have declined um and some due to the economic uh climate. But more, it's actually more about the actual collections that we've taken in. Um, the budgeted revenue this past year um was just higher than what we've actually taken in this year. And so we've adjusted those budget figures to more closely align with that revenue income stream. Um, we are including funding to meet our federal and state mandates um and our inflationary costs. Um, we do have funding included to restructure and relocate the identified schools in the building program. Um, and as I said, no millage increase on our operational um budget. And uh just, you know, again, reiterate that a budget amendment will be likely um this fall due to a, you know, passes of a general appropriations bill by the General Assembly. So um, Madam Chair, with that, um, you know, that is our third reading proposal. And I'd be happy to um answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Salters. We appreciate that third reading and we appreciate you adjusting as we moved along in this process. And we look forward to hearing what the legislature uh determines in the fall when they reconvene. Board, you've now heard the third reading. Uh, tonight is the night we will vote on this budget. We will be voting during our general session, which follows this public hearing. But at this time, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to ask Mr. Salters or the finance team?
Um, Mr. Salters, this is Amory Green. Thank you for the the presentation. And I know that um this budget reflects a lot of belt tightening. Um, and I appreciate all that you and your staff have done to kind of prepare us for the current situation. Um, and I'm not trying to ask you to, like, predict the future. Um, but have you already, anticipating that possibly the Appropriations Act that um General Assembly passes in September could impact us negatively? Have y'all, has your team started projecting where additional belt tightening can take place?
Well, that's a great point. Um, well, that's a great point. Um, and you're correct, you know, the General Assembly, should they fund, um, you know, a step for teachers as an example or some form of that, they will likely not uh provide all of the funding associated with that because our, they usually fund at the state minimum salary schedule. And our district funds um a percentage above that. And so we will have a local match to have to uh come up with to provide that uh step increase. And so, um, you know, we certainly are looking at ways to, uh, to, you know, meet that match um and different options that um we've got. Um, obviously, uh, one of the ways to accomplish that in a given year is to, uh, you know, use some of your operational balance to make up that gap uh for a year and then um revisit it, um, you know, in your budget process um as you go through the next year. Um, there are other ways, you know, to cut additional, um, you know, services or programs that are out there. Um, and so we'll be looking at those adjustments as we go. I'll tell you that we, um, you know, really every day, we're monitoring the changes that um are coming about with the way that we may open school and what that looks like and associated uh costs and staffing needs. And so um really, uh, we're monitoring it every, literally every day because there's something changing every day. So uh we will continue to prepare for that um and have conversations with you guys as we get, move forward um so that, you know, you have plenty of understanding and noticing your different options, um, should we have to meet some, you know, matching of that.
Well, and I mean, I think a very good example of a good thing with an unintended consequence is the funding for the additional um SROs and safety personnel and the cost that we incur um for, you know, the General Assembly is really good at the headlines. There's more money for SRO and security, but the district has to pick up the equipment and the vehicles and the fringe benefits. Um, and so the actual cost for some things is usually not funded in full. Is that accurate?
That is, that is very accurate, yes.
And even our existing SROs, this is Cindy, even the existing SROs, what percent does the sheriff's department and the town police departments, what percent do they pay of their current salaries? The ones we already have on our books?
Um, yeah, it's like seventy-five, twenty-five, um, and, you know, some cases eighty-two, something like that.
They pay twenty-five, right?
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. And then we typically provide the equipment um and the equipment, including the car and the, um, you know, officer equipment that they wear and use.
We appreciate them. It's just that I want people to understand that they're not employees that are just given to us with no strings. They all come with strings in order to maintain that position. Uh, board members, any other questions or comments for the, for Mr. Salters before we open it up for a public comment?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Salters, I have a question. Um, they were just talking about SROs and we provide their vehicle equipment. Was that a decision made here locally? Because I don't believe that all districts provide these same things for their SROs.
Um, the contracts for those SROs are negotiated with the different agencies that provide them. Um, and so that's a local, um, it's a local county, if you will, um, negotiation. Um, you know, with our sheriff's department, um, you know, and the county council oversees that. And then with our town municipalities, uh, the town of Pele and the town of Lexington, um, those different municipalities, um, and we actually have slightly different arrangements with each one. Um, but those are negotiated locally.
Okay, thank you. Um, you're page twelve, which is my old page nine. Um, you mentioned you have incorporated some of these into our CARES Act plan for the potential reimbursement. How much have you asked for reimbursement through the CARES Act?
So our CARES Act funding um that we potentially can receive is roughly about three million dollars. Um, and so the two um items that I showed on the screen here are two of the potential reimbursements that we're looking at incorporating into that plan. And there's about twelve different categories of expenditures that either future expenditures or, you know, past expenditures going back to March that could qualify.
Thank you. You also said the district is legally restricted from providing step increases for teachers at this time. Do you have that specific language out of those that you quoted?
Yeah, it's, um, let me get to that page here. Hang on one second. Um, it, the state minimum, it's part two, section four D states, "The state teacher minimum salary schedule will remain at the fiscal year nineteen-twenty funding level. Step increases are suspended until the annual General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty-twenty-twenty-one is enacted."
Okay, I interpret that to mean that the state is suspending those. But the state schedule is a minimum and state funding is only part of the teacher salaries. Um, I don't interpret that to mean that we are restricted from providing step increases. I mean, does anyone else interpret that a different way?
I'm just going off of the information we have been given by the state department.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Um, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, I'm just wondering, I was looking at the board, you're not here, so you can see.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Salters, I guess kind of in line with that question, if there is a legal restriction there and, you know, let's paint the brightest possible future and say things actually look pretty good from a financial perspective, do we have any sort of um history of a bonus-type situation with staff or teachers that if we, even if we couldn't provide a step increase but found ourselves financially um in a good place at the end of the year, that we have done that in the past?
Dr. Guyton, um, you know, I've been here going on twenty-five years and I have not, in my twenty-five years, we have not given employees any kind of bonus um or additional stipend that was not related to, um, you know, a board policy leave buyout of some kind or leave payment. Um, the, um, that has not been, not been done.
Thank you. And my only comment is, um, I want to thank you all and fiscal affairs working through this. I don't, no one can predict the future, but I think the acceleration of um of technology and our ability to facilitate our daily needs as well as our work through technology is not going to go away, even with hopefully COVID abates, which means more people are going to be working out of their homes, which means more, less commercial business sites. It means more people are going to be ordering from firms that are not local, that are national. So I'm really concerned that our tax base here in this county is going to shrink. And then I'm nervous, and I think the state's doing a little bit better about collecting sales tax on all the internet revenue. But I'm nervous that sales tax revenue, which again, those are two huge funding sources. So I'm nervous moving forward, you know, three, five, seven, ten years from now, about a sustainable funding model. So I think this is the first year of many that we're going to have to be very diligent about any potential increases because I don't think that tax base is coming back. So, but I may be wrong and I hope I'm wrong.
Board, any other questions or comments for Mr. Salters? Okay, hearing none at this point. Thank you, Mr. Salters.